Uh, will the recritator please call the roll?
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Okay, declare a quorum. Uh, next is the approval of the minutes of meeting July twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, let me start. I'll make a, a motion to approve the two lot subdivision for case number fourteen dash S U B nine, the Jacolt subdivision, five north oh twelve Wooddale Road.
So move.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next items to be considered at future meetings, the Euler clock tower update, August twenty-eighth. Potter Street easement, August twenty-eighth, facade guidelines, August twenty-eighth. It's gonna be busy. Uh, and case number fourteen dash V ten, eight eighty North Wooddale Road Parking Lot Variation, August twenty-eighth. Uh, is there anything else somebody would like to put on? Uh, Mayor Police.
Not sure where, um, the ponds and the rain gardens, was that gonna be discussed? The public works? Okay. Matt said, sounded like a...
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of different, uh, rain gardens slash ponds, uh, areas being thrown around. The one that's, uh, coming up first for discussion is the, the finalization of the plans for that Potter Street Pond, which is a C I P project, which you guys gave some guidance, uh, at a committee meeting over the winter, and that's coming back to you for final decision, uh, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, Mayor Police.
But we were looking at changing the pond, but are we looking at the alternative of putting in the rain garden as possible? Is that, I don't know if that's...
Yeah, we can, we can look into that, but right now, we're maintaining the course that you guys already directed us to go in, and we can talk about that and the course you already set us on at the next committee meeting when we discuss it. This is specifically for the Potter Street, not Elizabeth or anything like that.
Right, but, um, there's possible grant money from DuPage County Stormwater, and if we can do them all together, I think we even, some was mentioned, uh, by the treatment plant. So we'd lump them all, all together and go for one large grant, though.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, we can, I, I, I can put a, a little update report in the packet tomorrow on where we're at with all the ponds.
Alright. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Concerns? Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Call the Public Health Safety Judicial Committee to order, let the road, uh, let the, let the keeper state that everyone's, same people still here. Need a motion approved in minutes, July tenth, twenty-fourteen.
So move.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Uh, Chief, go ahead. Motion, um, recommendation for, uh, the doors.
Alright, thank you. I'm coming in tonight with a request for, uh, to approve an appraisal from, uh, Conomatic, do, uh, Door Systems Company, uh, to replace seven doors in the police department. The, this was originally budgeted as the four outside main doors, which, those need to be replaced. Uh, they're rusting with holes through them, uh, so definitely a necessity. Uh, we bid this, uh, this project out to, uh, six different companies, and we also included an alternate bid to do the interior three doors because while those aren't in as bad a shape, they're starting to show the same wear that it would make sense to do it at this time if the price came in low enough. So, th- there's really two options here. We'd like to do the full project, uh, which would be four exterior and three interior doors for eight, not to exceed eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, the original plan in the budget was just the four exterior doors, and if council only wanted to do those, the price would be ten thousand seven hundred dollars.
I make a motion to do the eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Uh, Roca? Oh, question. Go ahead.
Time's up.
The thing is, and I, I talked to Mr. Vest about this, I have no problem proving this, but I would like that they go out and call some of these vendors and see why they didn't bid for it at all. I mean, i- it's pretty odd that some of these big door people then bid on it, and, and I just got this gut feeling that something, we're gonna come back here, we're overrun, or something, they're gonna find that door. Some of these big companies then bid on it, and I'd like them to do an outreach, to just call them and ask them. So I'll, I'll pass this, but I would like that info for the next councilman, I mean, councilman.
Sure, we can, uh, reach out to them, see if anyone will share. I know we did, uh, several of them came out and visited, uh, and did a pre, uh, pre-bid meeting, uh, but not sure why they did, but we'll inquire and see if we, if anyone will tell us.
Okay. Oh, my favorite Alderman. Tony.
Chief, I don't know if you can answer this. How did these doors get like this? I mean, they're twenty-four years, and they're supposed to have some kind of, uh, what kind of metal was it? I mean, is, is it salt?
Salt.
Yeah, uh, salt and the weather over the years.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you know, the last two to three years, you kinda saw more of a deterioration. We did even, uh, try and look into some type of, uh, filling the cavity with, uh, some type in finishing, but it just, it's, it really wasn't...
So the new doors are we gonna get, probably gonna have a protective coating, so...
Yeah, they'll be painted with protective coating. They will be all steel doors and, uh, you know, name brand doors.
Okay, thanks.
Peter Jacobs.
Quick question. Are we having, is there some kind of warranty with this, or what kind of warranty do they have?
Um, I don't have, I can try and look that up and see what the warranty, I would, I would imagine the standard manufacturer warranty. Um, I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but I can try and get that answer, uh, before next week.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Roca.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Items for future meeting, license plate reader, September. Anything else? Need a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Like to call the Public Works Committee to Order. Roca, taker, please note, the same people are here. Like to approve the minutes of the meeting, July tenth, twenty-fourteen. Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, approve permanent and construction easement at one twenty-one South Montclair for stormwater redemption. Any questions? Eugene?
Is this, is this some private property?
Matt?
Yes, this, uh, project was based upon the stormwater study, um, that was done a couple of years ago by Baxter and Woodman. There's, um, due to some changes along Central, there was some drainage that, uh, went into the rear yard at one twenty-one. Um, that's why we need the easement to go on to private property, to build a structure and to put that structure out, back out to the roadway on Montclair.
Go ahead, Eugene.
Are we doing this in-house?
Yes, sir.
And what's the cost for us to do it in-house?
Go ahead.
Um, I don't have an exact cost right now. We can get that for you for next week. Um, the cost of the structure and about eighty feet worth of pipe, so it'll probably be three thousand dollars-ish.
Okay, so my question, like...
Go ahead, Alderman.
So my question is, if this doesn't work over there, are we still with that drainage issue? Are we gonna come back again and say we gotta redo it, or... I mean, I, I just, if, if we're gonna do it, if we can't do it the right way, then I don't recommend us doing it.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I believe this will be done the right way. Um, it's, um, a drain, um, we're gonna do some, uh, small sculpture of the yard to allow the drain, the water flow to drain into the structure, and then it just pipes straight out to Montclair. So, basically, all it is, is an inlet structure, kinda similar to the ones that, uh, we've done before, and then, uh, just a pipe, um, out to the street.
The pitch is gonna be done right, going out to...
Matt?
Yes, we try to always do it right the first time.
Art?
Well, thanks. Is this just to drain that one property, or is there other property that drains into this?
Yeah, there's other properties that drain into this property. That's why there has, having an issue.
I'd like to make that motion, though I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, award engineering services to Christopher B. Burkey, Engineering L T D, for a sanitary sewer lift station study, and the not to exceed amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred. That is my motion, though I have a second.
Second.
Questions? Right.
Jeff, why, why Burke?
Gotcha.
Well, we, uh, as you know, every two years, we have a, um, S O Q, Statement of Qualifications for Engineering Firms. This is, uh, year two of that, before we go out for, um, S O Qs again. Burke is on the list, and within the list, we categorize each discipline with about three to four engineering firms on that list of twelve. Uh, Burke is, is on this discipline. Um, so we sent out for proposals for the four firms that are within this discipline. Okay, so we get the four proposals back, and then a review team reviews the proposals, um, comprised of staff and elected officials, and the review team then decided that Burke was the best, uh, company to do this work, and that's where we're at.
Who's the elected officials in that?
Uh, Alderman Art Woods, uh, is chairman of P Z B, and Alderman Frank Lazara is chairman of Public Works and, uh, Mayor Police.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, uh, Eugene.
I, uh, I'd like to see the, uh, the way it's broke down, is that the way the committee recommended, one, two, three, and four, is that how they were rated in the memo that I received? Was Robinson number one and H R Green, you know, how, when we were part of that committee, when I was with Public Works, we used to rate the engineer firms what they were best in, and, and break it down, what made them more qualified by the other. I do not see that in here. And I don't know if we use that format anymore or not. I'm in favor of proving this, but I would like to see how we rated it and what was the difference and, and, and all that.
Okay. Jeff, can you get that for him?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, uh, we do norm, we, we have used that point rating system in the past, but this one, everyone kinda wanted to get together and, and speak on the topic, and so we all sat down and discussed, uh, all the various aspects of the proposals and all the, uh, different facets of good and bad for each, and, and basically came to a consensus, uh, in the discussion.
Well, we had it, last time we had a discussion like that when I was there, and, and then we rated them the way on a form. I just don't know where that dropped off. What was the topic on why this one was here and this one wasn't? What was your concern? What was your concern? It's not, I'm not asking for a miracle here, but I, I have no problem moving this forward, but I would like to inform.
Go ahead, Mayor, will you have something?
Basically, when we sat down, all the companies pretty much rated about the same. Question was, you know, there was, as you can see, there's a pricing difference. If you look at them, one of them doesn't have anything for allowance for authorized services, but if you look through his book, and I have it because I figured this question would come up. A complete structural engineering analysis require confined space entry into various structures, it's not contemplated. The city desire such as analysis, we would likely employ a subconsultant. So theirs is extra. They're within probably a thousand dollars of each other. They were basically rated pretty much the same, and figured, since Burke is on the list.
Gotcha.
Yeah, please keep in mind the way this works too, is, is the review committee just reviews all the proposals and it kinda gives a recommendation. If you may have noticed, Jeremy did send out a link to all the proposals, so you guys got all the council, got a chance to look at all four of the proposals. So you don't have to go with what the committee recommended. You can go with which one you think was the best. Um, that's, I mean, you have all the proposals, so I'm sure you read them all over.
Uh, Peter.
However, I mean, we do have a committee to review this, and I would say this is their recommendation, so I would wanna go for, with their recommendation.
Okay, can we do a roll call, please? Look, you have another question?
Yeah, again...
Go ahead.
I have no problem with proving this. I'm, I'm not knocking this program to go forward. All I'm asking is that we receive the documents on what the questions were raised and how we rated them in the meeting. I mean, I, I'm not saying I don't wanna do this, so don't think I'm on to this. I just want more information.
Okay.
So my vote is yes, but it seems like Peter is saying, I'm all for this. I'm all for it, but show me some more documents. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, we'll do as well have Jeremy summarize the discussion points and put it in your packet in preparation for the final vote.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
abstained.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes. Report and recommendation, award first year of a three-year contract to Cosec Tree Service for the Parkway Tree Removal Program in the not to exceed amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Go ahead, uh, Roy.
I'll let Art go first.
Art?
Yeah, well, my question is, obviously, we've been waiting for a while. There's a lot of dead trees, and especially since we've, uh, sent out letters to residents to cut down the trees, giving them thirty days to cut down the trees on their property, and we've taken two years to do ours or, or better. Uh, I just wanna know that we're gonna get on this and get these trees down. On Elizabeth Court alone, there's twenty-three or twenty-four dead trees that they've been complaining about for two years now.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, I've already, uh, had preliminary discussions with Cosec Tree Service regarding this and explaining to them, um, the, the want for us to get them in here quickly. Um, they are working on other contracts with other municipalities at this time as well. They did state that they would, uh, have some availabilities come the first of September, um, which is only a couple of weeks away, um, that they would, uh, come in and, uh, bang out some of our, some of our areas, may not, maybe not get all the two hundred-plus trees done right away. But they're more, um, willing and eager to get in and do a good job for the city of Wooddale. So, um, once we get the contracts to them, um, that'll give us a couple of weeks to get those things, um, ironed out before the first of September. We'll get them in here as quickly as possible after that.
Thank you.
Peter?
Matt, is this, uh, does, is this company gonna do it all three years? Uh, 'cause it says just for the first year, or do, after a year, are we re-bidding this, or how does that work?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, the way we set this up was, um, to do a three-year contract. The second two years of the contract, um, the city owns the right to, um, to stop the contract at the beginning of each of those two years. What we wanted to do was to go in and get pricing, lock pricing in for all three years. We know that the ash tree removals is gonna be done, um, hopefully by the end of this year. That's what our plan is, that all ash trees will be removed by April thirtieth of this year. But we also are realist and know that there are other trees out there that are gonna mean to be removed. And instead of then going out for another bid for next year, if everybody is happy with Cosec, then we'll bring a, we'll bring a, um, authorization to, um, initiate the second year of this contract in the springtime. We'll already know the pricing structure. Uh, we'll also be able to budget. Then, if I know that I have, uh, fifty trees of these sizes, I'll be able to come up with a lot better budget number for the, uh, maintenance of the trees, removal of those trees.
Go ahead, Peter.
Is that sixty-seven thousand? Is that stay consistent, or is, does that go up by a percentage or anything?
Go ahead, Matt.
The pricing structure that's in here, um, you'll notice stays pretty consistent. Actually goes down a little bit in year three, um, on page, uh, looks like four of the, the memo packet. The pricing structure actually goes down in year three a little bit, so sixty-seven thousand is to remove these trees. Going forward, um, year two, say I know I have, um, twenty trees I need to remove, and they're all twenty-five inches, between twenty-five and thirty inches, and I'll know I've got twenty trees times six hundred dollars, that's, that's the amount of money that I'm gonna wanna spend. So we'll be able to come up with a little bit better numbers by having the numbers already in front of us, instead of estimating that, okay, well, this tree may cost a thousand dollars to remove, but it's really only six hundred dollars. So, uh, we've written this contract, so it's very favorable to us. Um, if, after the, after year one, um, the board is upset with the way that this, uh, contractor has been doing this work, if staff is not happy with the way that they've been doing their work, we can cut them loose and not be out anything. But I've worked with this company for the last six years in Carroll Stream. Um, they've taken over twenty-five hundred trees down in Carroll Stream with me, so, um, I've worked with them, I know them. They're good people, they work really hard, and they're very excited for the opportunity to work for the city of Wooddale, and just like any other business, they don't wanna do a bad job. They wanna come in and do a good job for us.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Man, I heard something about, uh, these guys cut down a tree and, I don't know, the stump wasn't taken out, or it's been there forever. I mean, nothing's gonna get paid out unless the stumps are completely gone, correct?
Matt?
Yeah, when this tree...
Just, just, just wanna check.
Yeah, when the tree is removed, and the stump is ground, and the stump is, and the grindings are removed, and it's refilled with dirt and grass seeded, that's when, that's when payment will be authorized.
Any other questions? Uh, Mayor, go ahead.
What about the grass seed, and that isn't... I'll leave that to Roy. He was the one who brought it up.
Go ahead, Roy.
I didn't see your hand up, that's why I was gonna bring it up.
Yeah, that's Roy's question.
I gave my time to Art, and it's good to come back.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm apologizing.
Are you done? Okay. First of all, I'm disappointed on staff and how they put this contract together, because there are some things that, that should've been in here that, Matt, you should've known, or Ken should've known. Example, the grass seed. What kind of grass seed? It's not listed here. We're gonna, Mr. Contractor, you could go buy grass seed. Buy our annual rye grass seed, put it down, dies next year. It's not in here. With the money that we're spending to pay you and Ken and Jeremy, I think a simple thing like that should've been in there, and the knowledge that you guys have. So, what, what are we doing with the seed? Is it just rye?
Go ahead, Matt.
Talked to Jeremy a little bit about this right before the meeting started, and we will, um, go back with our, um, talk to staff, make sure the same seed that we purchased, we will put in for, um, the contract documents, that they must purchase that type of seed or a similar type of seed, um, to be put, to be put down.
Also...
Go ahead, Roy.
Also, the topsoil. I take it that I would like in this contract about coming back within, if it sinks within the next six months after they're done, or a year, that they come back at their cost and refill it and reseed it. Again, it's not stated in here, and I mentioned it before.
Matt?
We can write that into the contract documents.
Would that be in before next week?
Yes.
So do we have to, if we approve this, do we have to put in, subject to these changes? Okay.
Right.
Alright, um...
Matt, one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead, Roy.
I find it disappointing that you just stuck up for this company in Carroll Stream. I've done work in Carroll Stream, I have many customers in Carroll Stream. I've seen their work, some of their work. I don't know what Carroll Stream contracts stated, so I can't say that they did their job a hundred percent, because I don't know if Carroll Stream's contract says put soil back in or not. But there's some stuff in Carroll Stream that I've seen and not too happy, and, but that's Carroll Stream. Thank you.
Uh, Tony?
Matt, uh, do we have any kind of schedule? Uh, begin, a lot of the residents calling up, asking about when their trees are gonna come down. Do we have a kind of a schedule, so at least when they call, we can let them know?
Go ahead, Matt.
Well, like I stated, we're gonna try to get them in the first week, first couple of weeks of September. Not knowing exactly how long they're gonna be able to stay and how much work they're gonna be able to get done during that first time allotment, since we're not technically under contract with them yet, I can't really break them down to get a schedule. The goal is, our goal is, one, to get them all done within this fiscal year, by the end of April. Our goal really is to get them done in this calendar year, by the end of December. So, um, knowing that, and knowing, um, the whole grass seeding stuff, obviously, we're going to, um, have the trees cut down. If they're cut down in the wintertime, they won't have to come back and do the dirt and seed in the springtime. We'll allow that opportunity for them to come back and do that. Obviously, I don't want them to, to come out and do dirt and seed when it's, you know, twenty below zero outside and they're cutting down trees. So, right now, we don't have a schedule of, of time, and I think it would be, uh, wrong for us to state a schedule, because as we know, with doing work, um, outside, um, if I say it's gonna be done on September thirtieth, and it's not done until October fifteenth, I don't wanna make people upset with that either. So, we will, um, work and do our due diligence to get the trees down as quickly as possible.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Mayor.
Man, a couple of questions. Okay, it's two hundred and twelve trees that we're gonna contract out. I, I don't, I don't think I asked you, how many trees are we taking out, do you know, on our own, our guys? Do you know? Have that number?
Go ahead, Matt.
It's just over a hundred trees.
So, besides the two twelve, then we got another hundred that we're doing. And one other thing.
Go ahead.
I spoke to Matt about, uh, the reforestation. You know, we're pulling out all these trees, and we're only gonna plant fifty-five in this fiscal year. I asked if we can move this up, and Matt said, basically, he wanted to see how the ground settled and tree placement, is that correct, Matt? Then, I don't wanna speak out of turn, because I know I was trying to, uh, get you to do more, put more trees in this year.
Matt?
Basically, what we need to do is figure out how many trees we can put back in, in the places, um, where trees used to be. So, we need to take time to go out to the different locations and see how many trees we can put back in. I know in the past here, within the city, um, trees being put back into locations where, um, old trees were at in the past, um, was, is frowned upon. Um, I did do some of that, um, in former employment, in placing trees within similar locations, maybe not right in this exact same hole, but within, you know, five, three or four or five feet away from an old root ball. I'd like to look at and really take a, a chance to go out and, and develop the reforestation program before we make hard, fast numbers of how many trees we're going to, we're gonna put in this year, next year. I'd also like to look into, uh, spring plantings as well, instead of just fall plantings.
Art, go ahead.
Okay, well, one to follow up on the, the mayor would plant, I'm on board with planting more trees, and I, I understand what you, what you're saying, but if we've only planned for fifty, we're, obviously, it's simple math, we're taking out three hundred and twelve, can't we at least double that to a hundred? Take your time putting them in, but figure that we're gonna put in a hundred, and then go around and, and, and look at them. You know, that would be my thing. I mean, we've been looking at this for, for years and talking about planting trees, and we're a tree city, and it just always drives me crazy that we plant twenty-five or, or fifty trees while we cut down three hundred and watch another four, five hundred die every year. I mean, it's, we, we have to do something to at least try to keep pace.
Matt?
Yeah, and I'm not against that at all, and I don't think that's what I'm trying to say. It's, um, the trees need to be replaced. I'm for that. I'm for, um, group, up, upping it from fifty-five to a hundred or whatever. But as of this time, until, um, we get a chance to really figure out how many trees we can get planted this year, um, if, if, when the numbers come back and I come asking for the money for the reforestation, you may see me ask for more money, um, so I can, so I can plant more trees. Um, but at this time, um, I just basically, in the memo, just wanted to show how much money we had left for, for the replacement of those trees.
Art?
Yeah, and then the other one to follow up on Alderman Wesley's, with putting the dirt. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of what it is he's trying to, uh, cover or avoid. My concern is, the contractor, how they're gonna view that. I mean, it's almost certain to sink, you know, how, how do we, how do we judge that, or, or do we just overmount it and let it sink? I mean, I'd just like a little more feedback, uh, how, how that would work. I know, I know what you're trying to do, and I, and I, and I agree with it, just I'm, I'm not sure. When you, if you go to the contractor and tell him, you know... When you, if you go to the contractor and tell him, you know, everyone that sinks, you gotta come back next year and, and put in more dirt and reseed it, well, that would be almost everyone that he does. They're sure to sink, so what are we gonna classify as sinking? A quarter inch, half inch? That's, that's my only concern. I don't want, I don't want the guy to, you know, just turn into, you know, an argument back and forth, or they want to raise the price substantially. But I also want him to do the job, as Alderman Wesley pointed out.
Eugene?
Are we looking at the tree replacements, the trees that we take down, uh, to put trees out, what we take down in this contract? Because I will tell you one thing, there's trees that were taken down a couple of years ago in my ward, and I'm sure through the city, and those people are still waiting for trees. So, just because I'm gonna remove all these trees in one area, I don't think Dave should be entitled to trees until those people that have been waiting for trees for two years that we took down, get their trees before we move forward with blanking a whole area. I think there's people, we have a list, and those need to be priority for tree replacements, because they've been waiting two years. They have not had a tree in their front yard for two years.
Matt?
This contract does not contemplate, is not reforestation contract at all. Con, this contract, uh, reforestation will take place upon the timeline of when your tree was removed.
Okay, but I...
This is just to take them, take them down.
This is just to take them down.
But I, I have a follow-up question on the contract itself. I do not see... In a contract, it says stump must be removed within ten days. Okay? After the tree is removed. If the tree ain't removed, and I don't see it anywhere in this contract unless I'm missing it, what is the liquidated damage if they don't obey by this contract? What is liquidated damage, say that tree stump is out there for fifteen to twenty days, and it wasn't ground up? What is liquidated damage here? I see in the contract here, if they don't clean up all the debris, or the tree removal stuff, it's a thousand dollars that will be held off on their next check. Is that the liquidated damage?
There's not a liquidated damage for that, for the ten, uh, ten days.
Okay.
That's our responsibility as staff, to keep Chioxic Tree Service on schedule for cutting down and removing trees. Normally, how, uh, this tree contractor works is that they'll come in, they'll cut down trees, they'll go back, stump them, put the dirt and seed in, and be done with it. They don't want to keep going back to the same subdivision to do, you know, cut the tree down, and then go back another time to stump it, and then go back another time to pull the stump, stump grindings out, and then go back another time to do the dirt. They're gonna go through, they're gonna cut the trees down, say they, they'll cut trees Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Thursday, they'll come in, they'll stump them all, they'll pull the grindings out Friday morning, they'll put the dirt back in Friday afternoon, put the seed down, and off they go to the next one. That's typically how, how this contractor works. So, it shouldn't be ten days, fifteen days, twenty days. We want them to come in, get their job done, and get out.
Art?
Yeah, Matt, how are they gonna get paid? So, they're gonna bill for a completed unit, meaning tree cut, stump, ground, surface restored? Would that be acceptable billing, or are they gonna be able to bill just for cutting trees down? We'll get to stumps later.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, I normally just bill, or, it has to be done. Top to bottom, done, completed before.
Thank you.
Now, if that means that we hold back, if they cut in the, if they cut them in the wintertime, maybe we hold back a portion of their, and before they come back and do the, the dirt and seed. And that's something that we, I think it would be mutually agreed upon between us and the contractor.
Go ahead, Roy.
In that case, I also would like to see in here, because we're gonna put a, hold on, when they put down the dirt, we're gonna put a timeline on it, right? And for it doesn't sink, right?
That's what you had asked about.
Okay, so, could we put in there to, um, put a dollar amount of, uh, four to five thousand dollars in holding back until that timeline's up? To hold back on this, because once they get their money, they might not come back, even though we have options for two, year two, year three. But if we decide not to go do it in it anymore, and it's within that six-month period, who's gonna fix the dirt? We are, if it sinks.
Matt?
I would think that I would, might want to check with legal on that one, just because it's not written in the contract yet. I mean, if we write it in the, the upcoming contract that we give to, um, it wasn't part of the bid spec. So, if we write that into the contract, uh, maybe we work up some, um, percentage of money spent, one percent, or something like that, or, or five percent, um, that we hold back in retainage until the completion of the, of the contract plus six months.
You know, it, it doesn't sound like we're really ready to, uh, to go forward with this, because we have, I think, one, two, three, four, that I can see. Should we, uh...
No, we gotta get these trees down, period.
Well, I get that, but I'm listening to what you're saying, so...
But this thing is, because it wasn't written correctly.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, right?
It should have been done in last year in December.
Eugene, go ahead.
I, I think our staff, the, the questions are raised, they have a week. I, I, I think they could put this all, gather those questions in a week. I'm in favor of moving forward with this contract, providing, we could always shoot it down at council if they don't have the info that we want.
All right, so we have to redo, um, our motion with, we want to know what seed, we want top dirt, we want to know what liquidated damages is, are, and then we, what was your last one? You said, uh, to retain?
Retain, one percent, two percent, I don't care, something, like a retainer.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna redo my motion with those one, two, three, four items in it.
I agree.
Attorney review.
And what?
And with attorney review.
Yeah, okay, with the attorney review, so that's five things.
Right, I think they could do it, I, I really do.
Matt?
I think, I think the only issue may be the retainage part of it, since that's not written in the bid spec. That we may not be able to get that.
Why don't we get them in all of it? Any of the contracts?
I don't think that will work either.
So, I mean, I do believe that all the other work can be, all the other stuff can be accomplished, um, before next week. We can talk to Pat regarding the, um, the ability to put retainage in there. I just, I don't want to, one, scare the contractor away, because, um, if you look at the bid pricing, I mean, we did get excellent pricing from them. Much better than, um, obviously, much better than I thought we were, were gonna get. So, I think that even though, um, people are hesitant, were hesitant about, um, some of the issues within the contract, I don't think that there are ones that should hold up, um, authorization of this contract in moving forward. I mean, obviously, we all understand that ash trees are, um, a big priority within the town. They're not getting any better, they're only getting worse. I'm sure everybody on the, on the council has, has received, uh, um, information from their, from their constituents about the ash trees, so, um, we will do the best we can to get all this written into the contract, but I would ask that we don't hold it up, um, for, um, especially if we can't legally do the, the retainage part of it, and we move forward with this, so we can get this taken care of, and work with the contractor to, uh, to do, uh, a good job, and want to work here and for the city of Wooddale.
Okay, Pete, we're gonna take one more, and then we're gonna do a roll call.
For some reason, I mean, have we never hired a tree contractor before? It seems like we've never done this in the history of Wooddale, I mean, it should be, some of this should be standard language in there. Did we do a totally different type of deal this time, or...
Matt?
As far as I understand, um, this is the first contract that we've gone out for tree removals. In the past, we've just hired a company, had them do work for a certain amount of, of money, and then move forward. Knowing that the ash tree problem was as big as it is, and to be able to go out and get pricing, and know exactly what the price of the tree is gonna cost us to remove, that's why we decided to go in this direction.
Okay, like to, uh, roll call, please.
Alderman...
Matt, go ahead. With those four...
With those four changes, then...
Did you make the motion?
I did.
Peter seconded it, okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report and recommendation, purchase and insulation of FRP airs and Baffles for existing clarifiers at North Wa, uh, wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-nine, uh, ninety-seven dollars. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Uh, report and recommendation, final pay requests, Instaform Technology USA LLC for the sanitary sewer system rehabilitation project, year one, in the not-to-exceed amount of ninety-one thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Art?
Matt, when you pay this out, is that a hundred percent payout, or is there any retainage on, on this thing? And who, who checks this? The engineers come and make sure, spot check that it's done?
Matt?
Yeah, the engineers have already spot checked this project. This is final payouts, this is hundred percent done, so this closes out this form of this contract.
Thanks.
Peter?
Um, in the contract, it talks about, uh, getting a credit for some substandard work. What was substandard, and has that been corrected?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, the work that was done, that was, we received a credit on, there's a small, uh, section of pipe that was lined, that was in a rear yard. It, um, took a little bit of work to get back there. When it was, when it was televised afterwards, um, there was some waviness to the, basically, what happens is, um, it's like a big, huge, um, cardboard tube that they put in there, and then they expand it, and then when it expands, it goes around the hole inside of the, inside of the sewer. When it, when it came in, it was kind of wavy looking, it didn't adhere exactly to the sides of the wall. Institiform, um, was, was willing to do a credit. RJN, um, said that it's, it's in there, it's not going anywhere, it's not, um, it's not a, a problem area, it won't be a problem area. But due to the fact of where it was located, and, um, in the rear yard, and to not disrupt, um, the residents anymore in that area, everything was, everything still met specs and standards. It just didn't, it just wasn't as clean looking as it may, may have been. But Institiform signed off on it, that it was, it was still good to go. RJN signed off on it, that it was, it was good to go. But, um, Institiform basically was saying, you know, it's not perfect, so we, we do want to do, do a little something to, to, to make right.
Any more questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report and recommendation, pay request, partial number eight, William Brothers Construction, Inc. for the NWWTP upgrades Phase One B project, in the not-to-exceed amount of one million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll, oh, go ahead, Eugene.
I, I will tell you that this company has done an excellent job out there.
Absolutely, I agree.
They, they have been moving quite quickly on that. They, they had crews out there today in three different locations, so I'm very happy with this contract, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report and recommendation, pay request, partial number six, Northwest General Contractor, Inc. for the twenty-thirteen infraction improvement project, in the not-to-exceed amount of seventy-two thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and forty-two cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Peter?
Because there was some, a lot of issues over there, are we holding enough money back for this?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, as stated in the memo, a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand is being held back for the, uh, to work to be done over there.
Go ahead, Peter.
Is that enough, 'cause problems keep coming up? I mean, could we increase that a little bit?
Matt?
I don't believe we can increase it any more than that. This is for work already completed over there at that project site. So, we bu, we do believe that the hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand will make good on all the issues that we have out there.
Go ahead, Matt.
One final question, uh, when are all the issues gonna be taken care of?
Go ahead, Matt.
Well, as you're aware, um, sod cannot be laid until the first of September. So, once sod can be laid, um, that should solve ninety-five percent of our problems over there. And then, um, and then the rest of the stuff will get buttoned up over at that project site. Some of the sod and the crabgrass and stuff that's in there, that's not, that won't be paid for, um, out of this part of it, because, um, the sod that has crabgrass in it is, needs to be, um, fixed by the sod company. That's part of their warranty, so, whereas there's a lot of sod that needs to be replaced or modifications made over there, some of it will be paid for by us, and some of it won't be.
Pete?
One final question, any more sidewalks or driveways that have to be fixed over there?
Matt?
There'll be one more final walk-around, but, um, not that I'm aware of at this time.
Go, Eugene?
Who does the final walk-through for this? Physically walk through that whole site?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, the last ones that did it were, um, Trotters, um, resident engineer Leonard and Ken Reback, my assistant director.
So, Ken has walked through everything in that site? The sidewalk, the curbs, the driveways, everything?
Matt?
Yes.
Do, do we have a, a final punch list that our staff found was wrong, or, or not? Does the punch list that I got, I couldn't read?
Go ahead, Matt.
I don't know if Ken did his own punch list, or if he just denoted to Leonard what work needed to get done.
So, why would we not make our own punch list? To make sure their punch list matches ours?
Matt?
I guess one punch list is what we should have. We should keep one punch list, not multiple punch lists.
Go ahead, Roy.
Get back to the sod, you're saying the sod farm is responsible for the crabgrass?
Go ahead.
The, the contract stated that if there was crabgrass in the sod, the sod company is required to make, make that hole, so Central Sod, who do...
Go ahead, I like, go ahead, finish.
That is what's in the contract, that they're responsible to make sure that there's no crabgrass in that sod.
Well, tell you what, first frost, there won't be no crabgrass, because it dies. And then you got dead spots. So, crabgrass dies every year. So, I don't understand your statement here, because first, first frost, we don't have no more crabgrass, they're not responsible anymore.
Well, aren't we gonna do this before the first frost?
Yes, we are.
So, that kind of kills that, buddy.
Not necessar, well...
Well, yeah, we are, we're doing it in September, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be done in September.
Okay, so that's before the first frost?
So, any, any sod that has crabgrass in it, it will be taken out and replaced?
Matt, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay.
Is any of the topsoil gonna be replaced? I know we had lots of complaints about the topsoil as well.
Matt, that issue is already taken care of.
Yeah, I remember them bringing in new loads, taking up some of the old, uh, dirt. Any other questions?
Don't, one more.
Go ahead.
Don't forget over by, uh, the alley of sweet baby raisin, over there.
Yes, sir.
The grass is probably about that high. The grass is probably about that high now because landscaper won't cut it because he can't cut it. Sidewalk and blacktop is much of a difference.
Go ahead, Matt.
That is noted.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
No.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
No.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
How many is that? That passes, okay. Report and recommendation, gas line insulation at North Waste Water Treatment Plant in, in amount not to exceed $81,514. Anybody want to prove that? Go ahead, Eugene. Questions?
All right, yeah, I, I'll start this debate here. Just for you to know, this has been an ongoing with the gas company since we started the treatment plant project. They knew we had to do that gas line to bring a bigger gas line in for our buildings. Obviously, when this was all going on, when we had a complaint about the furnace running constantly because we didn't have enough gas line feeding it to kick it off. Since then, we replaced a belt and I believe maybe another part of that furnace. I am not blaming DC on this. I will be blaming the gas company because we have been fighting with the gas company constantly for almost a year to get that gas line upgraded. They have dragged their feet constantly on this project. Am I happy that this price tag is $81,000? Absolutely not. But I will tell you right now, if we do not approve this $81,000, we cannot open those other buildings that are slated, some of those buildings are slated to open up here in October and November. And if we do not approve this, we will not have enough heat to maintain those buildings. We have a hot water tank that's in one of those buildings and we cannot do the final startup of a hot water tank because we don't have enough gas to feed it. So, I'm going a year already with maximum and I cannot still make sure that hot water tank works in that building because I don't have enough gas line. I'm not blaming the staff. We aren't blaming the staff on this issue here, the gas company. But the point is, right now, if we don't approve this now, we don't even know if we're going to get it installed in time. So, right now, they won't give us a, a start time once this is approved because now they said it's in a, a wetland or what do they call it, the flood plain and all that? They knew all that upfront. So, the gas company dragged their feet on this. So, the other options, we're going to have to start looking in here down the line. If we don't get these up and running in October, if the gas company don't come in, we're going to end up adding another bill to this council because we're going to have to bring heaters in to heat those buildings for the pipes don't freeze. So, the gas company is even putting us in another predicament that may cost the city even more. So, my question is, approve this $81,000 now to get this off the ground, get it done with, and then we go after the gas company for all the extra money that we have to pay to maintain those buildings.
Want to make that in motion?
I make that in motion.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, replacement of fuel management system, August, September. Anything else? Peter.
I'd like to add, looking at the street sweeper that's on schedule for replacement next year. So, I just kind of want to talk about if there would be any savings outsourcing that before we spend another $160,000 on a new sweeper.
So, outsourcing our sweep, our street sweeping?
Yeah, looking into it, you know, if it would be, if it would save the city money.
Okay. Mayor.
Just to get off topic, one, one second. We had Prairie Fest this past weekend, or last weekend I should say. Just want to thank all the volunteers who helped out, make the fest a great success. All our public works, police, staff, everybody who volunteered, elected officials, everybody. Very well attended, everybody had a great time. Just want to make sure that we thank everybody who did help out.
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead, Art.
One more thing. If, if you haven't seen it on Chicago Best, we had one of our local restaurants that was on the Chicago Best, maybe about a month ago, Ugazi's. So, just so you, so we gained some PR, so.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna play that next week so everybody can see kind of promote the city business. Interesting video.
Eugene.
The other thing I, I really would like, an agenda next time is I, I'd like to know what our backup plan is. If the gas company tell me they can't have this until November or December, I, I'd like to see where that plays out. What we're going to need to heat those buildings. Because right now, we got three buildings that's going online and we don't have any heat in there that could supply that demand that we need. So, I, I'd like to know what our cost is going to be in start pricing it out. Because I know, and, and I, and I'll tell you one thing, I'm where you go bat with the, the gas company to pay us back the money that we're going to cost to maintain those buildings, so.
Good luck with that.
Okay, uh, any, anything else? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.